Six o'clock on the computer, so we'll call the meeting to order, the regular meeting at Port of Allen, Monday, October 7th. We'll start with the plague salute. Join us, please.
(inaudible) To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thanks for coming, everybody. We have a pretty full agenda tonight. We're gonna get as far as we can. Maybe have to table some things and move at least one thing around. So we'll start with our consent agenda items.
Chairman, I move to accept consent agenda item, regular meeting minutes of June 4th.
I'll second. Have a motion made in second?
Agenda item.
June 4th. Should it be like with the correction?
Oh, it wouldn't be June 4th.
September 4th.
It would be September 4th.
September 3rd.
3rd.
With that correction.
Yes. Thank you.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Second item is action items A, B, and C.
I'll make a motion to approve action items A, B, and C.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Commissioner reports. You want to start?
Yep. Attended the general meeting on September 3rd. Also attended a meeting with the executive director, Pat McCullough, and the area habitat biologists regarding the Sargent Oyster House and the book grant. And then I went to the law enforcement breakfast. Highly recommend if anybody has the time, Friday's the last Friday of the month, to attend those breakfasts. Sheriff President Louie J. for his stepdad, the community.
Sure. Regular meeting, WPPA selection committee. Yay, James. Caris, I do have to say, because we are being recorded, so it's so cool, Washington Public Courts President Don Meyer and Caris Consulting helped make this decision really great and clear and thorough. So, welcome, James. Peninsula Regional Transportation Organization, we're getting up to speed as far as having Kitsap Transit be the organizational and administrative entity that's running the RTPO. We got a briefing from Dennis Engel of WashDOT. He's the Olympic Region employee on some of the projects, and I bring this up, of course, there's lots of meetings, but one of the items is Highway 300 North Shore. There's 64,000. It's not specific about what they're dealing with about the Union River Bridge, but they are gonna start fixing, they called it the ADA compliant, so that means that the shoulders are gonna get fixed. So I just wanted everybody to know about that. Of course, we did the final voting on James on the 23rd, and then also North Mason Community Voice on the 23rd. Representatives Dan Griffey and Jim McKeown were there, and it was well-attended. Some of the items that were talked about was a DNR land shooting range and the gravel pit on North Shore. And then WashDOT, we went, they had a stakeholder advisory group for the bypass, okay, state highway three freight corridor.
Record.
Thank you, I'll get used to that eventually. And of course, there's three options, north and south entrance, and they're still doing their advisory committee group, and they will be continuing on with that.
Yeah. I was gone for two weeks during September. I did call in for the regular report meeting on September 3rd. I worked with the EDC to, we're gonna send a letter to the city of Shelton regarding the homelessness problem down there. It's just saying that it's bad for business and that we've had some complaints and people aren't visiting the businesses in downtown Shelton because they're being accosted or how they're uncomfortable down there. So it's in a draft form right now. I'll bring it, I'll bring it to a meeting and make sure you guys all see a copy of it. That's it for my month. So, the next item is going to be the presentation from James Thompson, our new WPPA executive director, but not new to the WPPA. What do you need? Do you want the podium, or?
No, I just, I'm here mainly as an observer, but I wanted to introduce myself. I'm James Thompson. I know you all know me, but I'm the executive director now of the Washington Public Courts Association, and I'm the deputy director that we work with the association about since your report, and a great supporter of the association, and I hope that you talk a lot about it in return. We really have three kind of thrusts in our work. Firstly, we can run the legislative agenda for the potential ports, we do training, hopefully training programs, and we format the, and then we're MIR ports. This month we'll have the small ports of Severn, Monteverde, Washington, and it's really great to get together and talk about the kinds of problems they're facing, the opportunities that they have before them, and share information on how to advance on that kind of stuff. So I appreciate your involvement, and I appreciate the opportunity to be here. I wanna come out and learn what you're doing. I've never sat in this room, I'm sorry to say, but I'm pleased to be here tonight and see what's important to you and what you're doing, and wanna be a helpful partner to you. So that's why I'm here. Thank you.
Thank you, James.
I just have a question. I wonder, you know, you have all the big ports and then you have small ports like us. How do you divide your time? Do you have a formula for that, or you just take it as it comes, or?
Well, I'm figuring it out right now, so I do a small town, and I love this, and I live in, I live in London, so I am trying to jump out and get into as many small ports as possible. The bigger port, Port Seattle, Tacoma, tends to be telephonic stuff, and then all of a sudden, you get caught up in things. I'm not sure what the division will be like, albeit Seattle from Queens this week, but in the meantime, I'm still trying to check that out. And if I like to work as a lobbyist, you can lobby from your desk, and you can learn a lot about ports sitting at your desk either, you have to be out there doing it. So I really tend not to, my interest is not spending time in a lobby, so much.
Great. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
That was a quick process to go through.
Pretty grueling, huh?
Yeah, I bet it was.
You had to do a lot of work.
Well, I had it easy. I just, you know, it was, but you had to go through just the anticipation and all that, you know. But it was, it wasn't, it was.
It was a good process.
It was, and it was really, really good.
Great, this was a great, cool process. Absolutely, absolutely impressed.
I agree. The fact that they had 41 applicants, that tells a lot about the Washington Public Courts Association.
Yeah.
I think that's pretty impressive. So especially, congratulations.
Well, thank you. That's a, that's a, that's a, that's a, that's a.
Yeah, and the, you know. The people who were some of the last candidates, you won because you had the experience and you know what ports are about. So, and that's really critical, as important, as you know, it's, we're our own, our own animal.
Sure.
Welcome.
All right. So commissioners, we have on our new business agenda item to discuss with a presentation by Heather Reese, potential renter of the office space. If there's no objection, can we move her up to start with hers?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Heather? If you can go to the podium, yeah, that way you can be famous on the video.
I just wanna make a correction of my last name. It's S, not a C.
Oh.
So it's R-E-E-S-E.
Okay.
Reese's pieces.
Great.
Just so you know. My name is Heather Reese, and I'm a photographer. And actually, I work full-time for the state of Washington as a case manager for a DVA, full-time, Monday through Friday. But my passion is photography and art and working with children in the community. So I am asking if I could rent space here for evenings and weekends to provide a place to meet clients and with a beautiful environment, photograph weddings here, picture, and I've lived here since 2009, and my children attend North Mason School. And I have photographed a lot of special events here in Mason County, and I wasn't sure about the presentation, but you wanted me to really list my experience, but it's been over 15 years that I have been a photographer, doing events at the hub here, the Senior Center, Mother's Day event, North Mason, United Methodist Church, Vacation Bible School, and union events for my work. I'm also a piano teacher, and I teach developmentally disabled children with autism, piano and music and music appreciation. So all in all, I feel like I would be a good candidate to rent the office space here, and I would appreciate the opportunity to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Heather. I think you took my oldest daughter's sorrows?
Maybe.
I think you did.
Yeah.
I believe we did, yeah.
So I appreciate you guys giving me the time to be here and.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you for coming. Appreciate it. Hope to see you at North Mason Community Voice, too. I know it's late, but.
I know that.
Good, yeah. Thank you.
Thanks. So moving back up to item number seven, executive director's report. Oh, wait, I moved James up above of security officer's report. Travis, sorry.
Easy to forget about.
Not really.
No, you're not. That's where it stops doing its job, if you don't hear from it.
You're just, he was very stealth.
Travis Merrill, security officer for the Port Allen. We've got a lot more transit activity, vehicles, people sleeping in them at night. It's been four or five a week this month. So I've been moving everybody along, regardless if they're just here looking at the moon, and there are obviously just a couple that live up there at, you know, live locally here, because we've had way too much vandalism. As you know, our truck was vandalized and the gas stolen from it. The neighborhood houses here local had a bunch of stuff, tools and stuff stolen, so it's just no tolerance at this point, you know. We've had a nice community local park for many, many years, and, you know, it's always been real quiet, and it seems like in this past year, it's just compounded. So keeping it nice and quiet as much as I can.
That's great.
Larry and I had a conversation about changing the way we look at people who moor during the day. Maybe a 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM policy for no, not ticketing anybody for mooring at our docks, because some of the, you know, people that know the system are just getting out of it, and we're not getting any fundage from them. So as long as I'm checking after 7:00 PM nightly, anyone who's got there is getting a ticket and won't pursue charges.
Do we need, I'm sorry, Travis, we need to put signage up?
Yes, Larry and I have talked about signage, too, and maybe some more signage at both parks, indicating that the park does close at dark, because some people seem to think, oh, well, it's at 10:00. Well, no, it's, it's pretty dark out and it's raining outside. What are you doing here?
Right. I wouldn't go hog wild on the signs, the amount of signs. I'd just do one at each.
Sure.
You know, I always told people that there's thousands of signs on I find that say 60 miles an hour.
Who actually reads them?
Right.
Maybe just one big one as you approach it into the park.
Yeah, just the park rolls and something that looks good, that's gonna be durable.
Other than that, everything seems fine.
The hours change is on your agenda to discuss.
Great, thank you. Thanks, Travis.
Thank you, Travis.
Next up, executive director's report.
All right, 2020 budget. We have the draft 2020 budget on the agenda tonight, as well as a public hearing for the budget, and you need to set a date for a second public hearing, more than 10 days from now, less than 20. We use BiAS to track our 2019 revenue and expenses, hoping to get an even more accurate handle than we've had previously. However, the initial setup BiAS did for it, still, did for us, still has some kinks in it, tracking both cost and specific sources of revenue. We discovered this when we started setting up the Excel template. For example, we found a number of duplicate revenue categories for the same items with money posted in each of them, which is why the revenue we show in BiAS on the draft budget contains a category for unanticipated revenue. We're still figuring out where and how all that revenue needs to be properly allocated, but today we did figure out the right categories for almost half of what was shown on the draft that we sent you Friday. The updated budget document received today reflects those changes. This is mo, this is money we actually have, and the good news is that our total revenue does exceed expenses. The difference is shown as cash carryover. Plus, revenue we show in BiAS does match the latest treasurer's report from the county, so the money's there. What this is forcing us to do is look for and find all the quirks in BiAS and get them fixed, which we'll have completed before the next public hearing. Notable on the expense side, we have budgeted $7,000 for our state audit and $6,000 for election costs, neither of which we had last year. Also, our Endurus premium has increased significantly. Our 2018, 19 premium was a little over $17,000, while our 2019 and '20 premium, which you all approved last month, was up over 19.5. We budgeted 21 for the 2020, 2021 coverage. Our basic method, our basic methodology was to take our year-to-date costs, divide by the nine months covered in BiAS, get a monthly average, and multiply by 12 for our projected 2020 cost, the same method we've used for the past four years. However, BiAS supposedly gives us the ability to track our costs much more accurately than QuickBooks did, although our past projections have been pretty accurate every year. The only real question marks are revenue, not cost. As you know, we budgeted revenue very conservatively and cost very liberally. The main issues are how much property tax and timber tax revenue we'll receive. In 2018, we budgeted $11,000 for timber tax but received over $70,000. We budgeted $25,000 in 2019 and have received zero so far. We're not sure what to expect in 2020, so we've only budgeted for $10,000. We budgeted the same amount of property tax revenue for 2020 as we received in 2019, plus 1%, knowing that'll be a little low, but it does provide a small cushion. We also expect additional revenue from the new marina via the pay station, but have only budgeted the same amounts as we did in 2019. Anticipating the possibility of adopting an insurance plan, but assuming it won't happen, we have used for budgeting purposes is a 3% across-the-board cost of living increase for Leigh Anne, myself, and Don. There's a resolution on the agenda about this, though. Resolution 407. We've also budgeted for 10 new water hookups. I've issued 15 water availability letters to two different contractors, and three of the homes are under construction now. Whether or not we'll see the connection fees this year or next is still up in the air, so that's why we only budgeted for 10 next year, in case we see some of those this year. However, that does give us enough cash reserve to pay $10,000 back to the general fund for loans it has made to the water fund to repay the loan the IDD fund made to the water company, and it still leaves us a healthy profit. Other than that, I'm happy to answer any questions you have. Line of credit. I met with the municipal finance guys at Kitsap Bank. They've approved $100,000 line of credit for us. I had Cynthia Ween drop the bond paperwork, which also includes a resolution for you to approve, which is on the agenda. State audit, we've been notified in mid-September, will be audited again this year, and are waiting for the dates now. Water system issues, the only new thing to report on the potential new connections mentioned over the past couple of months, is that construction has started on three homes, which we previously issued water availability letters for. Also had an inquiry from Cedarland Homes about what exactly is entailed in tapping into our system and what the costs are once they've run the lines. I made contact with a firm that contracts to do the water line tapping, which we will pay, and then invoice the builder at prevailing wage for time of material, plus 12%, and that's what's in our water system plan. The Eric Community Routilities proposal, nothing new to report. Property purchase, you all approved resolution 405 last month to move this process forward. We've also received a milestone report from Kim Sellers at RCO, basically outlines what steps we have to take from here and in what order. They originally wanted the property acquisition to close by September 30th, but due to cash flow issues having to do with our other current projects, I had some concerns about meeting that deadline, was able to secure an extension to December 31st. Sellers are pushing us to close, and in talking with Kim, I found out that RCO will fund 75% of this upfront, once we have purchase and sale agreement in hand, which we do in the form of resolution 405, and submitted to them along with the closing documents. There's a somewhat convoluted process we have to go through, but Kim's gonna walk me through it later this week. Also, according to RCO, we need to have an appraisal review done. I contacted the person our appraiser recommended, and he said he'll try to have it out by the end of this week. Dock issue, on September 17th, we received a check from Endurus for $37,768 as a settlement for the dock. Even counting the attorney fees, which we shouldn't have had to pay, when it's all said and done, we came out with about $7,000 over what it would cost us to do the entire dock replacement. That's because we got the Department of Commerce to agree to allow us to use some of the marina project money to pay for the rest of the dock, since we couldn't move that project forward until the dock was repaired. I turned in $77,000 in for the dock, which was approved and processed, along with the rest of our $106,000 total reimbursement submitted. We saw that money electronically deposited on Friday, the 20th of September. We also got the final disengagement and close-out letter on this, excuse me, on this matter from Foster Pepper, it's in your meeting packets. I've contacted some of the alternative insurance providers to evaluate what our options will be for changing from Endurus next year. A number have responded, and I've spoken with two of them. However, we're stuck with Endurus for another year, as we're required to provide notice to terminate within a specific timeframe, which the attorneys advise us not to do until our claim was settled. Supposedly, Endurus would have had some incentive to settle rather than lose our business. One thing I will find out is if we can cancel sometime during the current insurance year, and since we've already paid the premium, if any of it is reimbursable. Also, last month, I told you I was seriously considering filing a complaint with the Insurance Commissioner's Office over the way Endurus has dealt with us. You all advised me to wait until the matter was settled. I'm also considering writing a very pointed letter to the members of the Endurus Board, detailing what happened and requesting they contribute to paying a portion of our attorney's fees, and I'd like to get your thoughts on both of those. Technology updates. In this year's budgeted, in this year's budget, we have included $7,500 for upgrades for technology. That includes new iPads for all of you, updated computers for Leigh Anne and I. In 2016, when we purchased the Dell office computers we have, the board said at that time, we'd like to upgrade our technology every three to four years. Four years would be 2020. With that in mind, I'm advocating that we upgrade to the latest Apple computers. Maintenance costs are a major driver of this. 2018, we spent a little over $4,600 to keep our PCs running. 2017, it wasn't as much, but it was over $3,000. So far, in 2019, we spent $1,745. We could have actually paid for this entire upgrade with what we've spent as keeping our existing PCs running and still saved money. And doesn't count lost productivity time. A lot of that maintenance cost deals with software compatibility issues when Microsoft does a Windows 10 upgrade, which they do automatically on a weekly basis. These updates can take anywhere from 10 minutes to two hours to install, and then sometimes software settings have to be reset afterwards. Most of the updates are for security issues, patching problems hackers have exposed. While we're protected behind a router and a VPN, we still have to deal with this from the update and lost productivity standpoint. Apple has almost none of this. Apple computers are compatible with BiAS, which I've confirmed with them. Since our BiAS software is hosted on their servers and is web-based, all it needs to run on a Mac is web browser and an internet connection. Microsoft 365 also runs on a Mac with a version that's made specifically for the Mac, so everything we've saved in the cloud is still available to us. PDF documents, which we use extensively across platform, can be served, saved directly from Microsoft Office applications, which include Word, Excel, and PowerPoint. In fact, I built the PowerPoint presentations we use for our RCO grant presentation and the comprehensive scheme open house presentation last year on my Mac at home. Apple computers are, as a rule, also more dependable and last longer with, if any, hardware issues. The ones wet Apple has, or five years old, have had no hardware issues and can still run the latest software upgrades. There are a couple of low-cost, specific software packages we may need to buy unless we wanna venture into our own graphics product, production, which as a rule, I could do on a Mac, but not on a PC. We can use our existing large monitors, as well as connect our big screen here, as Macs have an HDMI port. In the end, our long-term technology costs would be reduced, 'cause we won't have to pay someone to keep them running, and they'll run longer with a lot less product, lost productivity. Copier lease, lease on our copiers up, we need to buy, either buy it at market value or get a new one on lease, which are preferred option. Our goal is to try and find a machine that fits our needs, includes the technology advances that have taken place between now and the time we got that machine five years ago, and does so at the least cost. We've narrowed it down to a couple of the proposals we finally received, and now it's just a case of negotiating the best deal. Security issues. We're looking into what it'll take to install some kind of high-resolution wireless remote camera system here at the park, and as well as at the Hood Canal Boat Launch and Marina. There are systems available that'll transmit images with multiple cameras in multiple locations, store them in the cloud for any necessary law enforcement documentation. I met with a representative from Intella Systems, did a tour of our facilities, so they could evaluate our needs and give us a bid. Still waiting on that. Called them to follow up last week and was told they would try to find it and get it to us in time for this meeting, which didn't happen. So I'll be contacting some other providers as well. Vandalism to our truck. One night, a couple of weekends ago, someone attempted siphon gas from our truck, and in the process severely damaged the filler tool, filler tube to the gas tank. Not knowing exactly what happened, we had the truck towed to the Toyota dealer to be repaired. Cost was a little over $600, plus the towing, which we haven't been billed for yet. Contractors working on Betzinger's house all lost a lot of tools stolen that same night. I think this underlines the need for security cameras. Don and I have also discussed the possibility of constructing a garage down by the shop and parking the truck in there at night. Pricing out garage packages right now, he got one today, it was right around $4,000. Don can do the actual construction, so cost would be basically material and Don's time. Also, since we had to pour concrete for the marina project, he asked, I had Don frame out the flooring, and we poured both at the same time. 3D building acquisition, nothing new to report on this. I have, however, included it in our SEDS request form with the EDC, along with Oyster House funding. WPPA meeting schedules. Next up is Small Ports Meeting in Leavenworth, October 24th and 25th. We've made reservations for everyone, so we can do the retreat there as well. However, the hotel is booked solid for Friday night, so our options are to move to another hotel in town and stay tonight, or just leave when we're done and face Friday night Seattle traffic. We need a decision on what you wanna do, so we can make reservations or not. I was scheduled to attend the Pacific Coast Conference of Harbor Masters and Port Directors meeting in Everett, October 8th to the 11th. However, after looking at the agenda, there was only one seminar in marina management that would pertain to us. I just don't think it was worth the $375 registration fee, plus two days in a hotel, at $200 and plus a night, along with mileage to and from Everett just for that. However, I will be attending an MRSC workshop on contracting and purchasing in Spokane on October 28th and 29th, which, considering all the projects we have going on and others we expect to pursue, I think would be much more valuable. Rather than come back here on Friday or Saturday, I'm gonna head directly to Spokane from Leavenworth. Cost of a hotel night is cheaper than the mileage back here from Leavenworth and then from here to Spokane. Last meeting of the year is the annual meeting, which is November 20th to 22nd, at the Hotel Marano in Tacoma. As usual, we'll make reservations for everyone. Retreat, I've provided you all with a proposed agenda. We'll need to discuss. Retreat, I've provided you all with a proposed agenda, we'll need to discuss future projects and the update to our comprehensive scheme, and I'd like to know if any of you have any other specific subjects you'd like to discuss, so we can add them to the agenda. Renting the small office, I had put a notice on Facebook that we'd like to rent that small office and had a couple inquiries. There is one that's somewhat unusual, and we have Hillary Reeve here to explain what she'd like to do and answer any questions you may have. Parking mortgage hours and talking with Travis, we both see the need to set specific hours for the park and for day mortgage, both here in the North Shore. Currently, parks open dawn to dusk, which creates some ongoing issues with transients, especially in summer. We're proposing a seven AM to seven PM in the winter, September tenth to April thirtieth, which are the, in the summer, which are the same dates as the changes from monthly to winter mortgage charges. Uh, from May first to September ninth, it would be seven AM to nine PM. As for daytime mortgage, we've allowed visiting boaters to moor at no charge, while they visit Allen, and set up for shrimping and crabbing on the North Shore. But the times they can be here have been pretty fluid, that's why we're proposing seven AM to seven PM, before and after would incur mortgage rates in effect at the time. Sign your agenda for discussion. Totem pole issue, nothing new to report. Old business, transient mortgage expansion project. We continue moving ahead on this, marine floats has finished the plumbing, removing the Santa Sailor, and Don will begin construction on the kiosk later this week. We're hoping to wrap up the entire project before this meeting, but a delay in delivery of the service equipment has pushed that back. I spoke with the electrical contractor this morning, and he hopes to be substantially finished by the end of the week. At that point, all we need is a final inspection and for the PUD to then connect to our service equipment. Lobbyists have suggested we do a ribbon-cutting ceremony, invite our legislatures and publicly legislateurs, and publicly thank them for securing funding for the project. I think this is an excellent idea that we can promote on Facebook, as well as invite the press. Depending on publication schedules, I'm also planning on doing some print and online advertising for the new Marina, late March and throughout April, since boating season opens the first Saturday in May. I'm also trying to get stories about it, Forty-eight Degrees North and Northwest Yachting, along with South Sound Business magazines. And before anyone even asks, I don't believe West Sound Home and Garden is an appropriate venue for advertising this, although I may write a story for the spring issue, which we have a feature on boating. Sweetwater Park, nothing new to report on this, other than finally speaking directly with North Mason School District Superintendent Dana Rosenback. She told me the district's lawyer was preparing a transfer agreement we can use to secure a deed to the property. Hopefully, that'll be fission shortly, so I can get this off my plate. Oyster House, we continue moving forward on this and have more momentum on this project than we've had the entire time I've been here. Pat McCullough's been a great help and has given us a proposal for working with us on not only this, but working on the master plan for the park, should you all agree to move forward with that. I told him, for now, all we need is to engage his services for engineering and design of the launch ramp removal and pier construction. I'll be sending him a scope of work proposal for that sometime this week. Our current part of the project is to get the launch ramp removed and the pilings driven. Commissioner Jackson and myself met with Pat McCullough and two people from Fish and Wildlife on September twenty-third, determined we also need to coordinate with Bill Ray on permitting, so everyone's on the same page. We also need to get a geotechnical survey done, like we did with the cultural resources survey. I believe we'll be well-served to have this done on the entire park, as we will have future projects required as well. And we can pay for it out of the grant. I also think we should have SEPA and NEPA done for everything as well. Once permits are secured, we can begin the demolition, we have to the end of February to get that done, otherwise, we have to wait until July. I've also signed the lease agreement with North Bay Historical Society, and Bonnie Knight has submitted it to the state for their approval, copy of which I forgot to include in your packet, but did send with the update documents today. Criminalization of Marina rules, nothing new's happened, although Commissioner Jackson continues to work on this, has some ideas on how to proceed. All ports meeting, the next meeting is on Halloween, so they may reschedule it, or not. We've also invited all the Mason County ports to another all ports meeting and got positive responses from Duwata and Grapeview. I spoke with Wendy Smith from Shelton this morning, she said her commissioners are reluctant to commit to another meeting unless the agenda pertains directly to them. Two of the main items we had suggested were an update on launch ramp issues, and I had also suggested a BIOS demonstration. Wendy since, says since they no longer have marine facilities and are happy with QuickBooks, they don't see any need to participate. I was thinking about approaching Jack Bailey from the Kitsap All Ports Association and broaching the idea of including not only us, but Grapeview and Duwata as well, and making it a West Sound Ports, All Ports Association, but I wanted to get your thoughts before I did that. That's my report.
Sorry, thank you.
Thank you, Barry.
Yes.
I have a question on, well, I think it's old business, uh, maybe it's, uh, three D building.
I'm sorry?
The three D building.
Yeah.
Um, I saw a for-sale sign on it.
Right.
And now I don't.
Yeah, I noticed that too. I noticed that Friday when it came out.
I s- I saw a large group of people there, about four or five trucks, uh, you know, personal trucks.
Mm-hmm.
And a bunch of people walking around the building, I didn't see the sign.
Okay.
It was old.
Yeah.
Yeah, it could be.
Okay.
Probably ought to find that out before the retreat.
Yeah.
'Cause that's on the retreat agenda.
I might have a point of contact with, uh, Wash Dot Milter Real Estate Person, 'cause they dealt with me, it's my property, so.
Okay.
You might have to call and remind me, but.
And finally.
But it is a point of contact.
And also, I apologize for my voice being so bad tonight, I'm just getting over that flu, so.
So, we need to, is there anything you want to talk about in new business items?
Um, well, we need to set a second public hearing date for the budget.
Okay.
And we need to have a public hearing on it for tonight.
Okay. So it needs to be ten days from today?
Minimum of ten, less than twenty.
What does that put us into?
Twenty-first is a Monday, it is just before the Washington Public Ports, but it's after ten days. Unless you want to do it on Friday.
Yeah, work for you guys.
That Friday is or not?
Yeah.
The twenty-first?
Yeah, it's the only, okay, only Monday I have, unless you want it during the week.
Okay.
Well, even.
Six PM?
Yep. Twenty-first works for me.
Is it, okay, six PM?
Did want to mention the, uh, the totem pole? So we're gonna have James, if we could arrange James Kelsey to come down, Don or I or somebody can, just, he's gonna cut it off, have him lower it to the ground, and then, um, guy across the street is gonna come over and inspect it, see if it's worth saving.
Yeah, I just haven't had time to really connect with James.
So any day that James can come down, I can, I can do the saw work.
Okay.
And lower it to the ground.
All right, let me give him a call, go from there. I know him from a long time, so.
And then, um, I, I would prefer to go home that Friday rather than stay, and I might stay in Leavenworth until the traffic's over, but.
I think I'd rather leave, too.
Okay.
'Cause I have a function I want to go to Saturday, so.
All right.
Save Monday.
Well, what I thought I might do is see if my wife would come over, spend the weekend in Leavenworth, and then head over to Spokane from there, but, you know, that's on me, that's not on the court.
So when does the retreat start, um, is it?
When the Small Ports Meeting gets over.
Friday, Friday afternoon.
No, when does it start? Is it Thursday?
Small Ports?
Yeah.
Oh, the, the seminar?
Not the seminar.
I don't know. When does it start?
Thursday.
There's a, there's a morning intensive Thursday morning, then the seminar.
Okay. So if I come in Wednesday night?
Yeah, that, that's what.
That would be my plan, yeah.
Okay, good. All right.
Wednesday night, Thursday, probably half a day Friday.
That's right.
Yeah.
Then we could do a retreat afterwards.
Right, that was the plan.
Okay.
So we just need to find a room.
Afterwards, sure.
Yeah, you, you know, in a worst-case scenario, well.
If you'll find a restaurant.
Yeah, in a worst-case scenario.
Got the hotel.
Really? Oh, okay.
Friday afterwards, might be able to get a room.
I'll, I'll work on that tomorrow.
Great. Yay, thanks, James, pleasure here.
Yeah. Thanks, James.
Okay, well, let me know.
Okay.
And then, um, I just wanted to, to talk a little bit about the, the line of credit and why we did it, what it's for.
Yeah, go ahead.
Well, it was brought up that.
Oh, you wanted to ask me?
Well, yeah, I wanted you to kind of, I mean, I was the one that suggested it, because we have all this kind of transfer of money for short periods of time, but if you can kind of.
Yeah, what we've done in the past is, uh, we have borrowed money from ourselves, basically out of the IDD fund and out of our reserves, and there's all this paperwork that goes with transferring and back and forth with the county. And it'd just be easier to call up the bank and say, I need X dollars for two weeks, and have them put it in our bank account, and be good to go. And the reason for it is basically, you know, we drew all of our reserves down quite a bit doing the dock project, and, uh, you know, we had to spend some money on a couple other things. And, you know, I was, like, doing this with all the money, but what I wanted to do primarily was to, you know, not have to do that. I, I'd rather that our money stayed our money, and that, you know, we got a hundred and six thousand dollars back, we borrowed, what, a hundred thousand from, you know, our reserves to pay for the dock, we got a hundred and six back out of the Marina project, and we had to pay all the up-fronts for the Marina, which was seventy-seven thousand for the section that wasn't insured, plus the section that was insured, so.
So you had to pay it, you get reimbursed.
Exactly. So what I'm trying to do is, we'll get reimbursed for everything, but rather than borrow from the IDD or borrow out of the state pool, I'd rather just be able to call up the bank and say, you know, give us some money for a couple of weeks, turn in the reimbursements to the state, get paid, and pay the line of credit back.
Do we have, uh, other projects coming that will be the same thing?
Yeah, we got the same thing with, uh, the Ogrin purchase, plus the work we're gonna do there, and on the launch ramp removal, you know, plus if we come up with any other projects.
Yeah. I think it makes good sense.
Yeah, 'cause my question was, this is a bond?
Yeah, mine too.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, I had Cynthia, we'd put together the paperwork, and when I saw that, I had the same reaction, you know, a bond, what, you know, 'cause all, all I was thinking about was, the first seminar I went to when you all hired me was in La Conner, it was a financial seminar, and they had all these bond salesmen there. And Del reminded me, used car salesman, so, you know, I kind of felt like maybe I was over my head, and that's why I called Cynthia and said, you know, how do I handle this? And she said it's basically a promissory note, it's good for two years. That's it.
So, I'm sorry, do we want to approve that resolution?
Um, I think we should do the, um, so we set the public hearing date, and let's, let's open the public hearing.
For our current budget?
Yeah, for the current twenty-twenty budget, so, we're gonna close the regular meeting, and we're gonna open the public hearing for the twenty-twenty budget.
I just have a question?
Yeah, come on up to the podium.
Do you have a comment during the hearing?
Uh, you can have a public comment during the hearing.
On the subject, though?
No, on the, uh, budget, the twenty-twenty budget.
Are you gonna hear this?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Got the two budget here. Anything from the public for the twenty-twenty draft budget? Anything from the commissioners?
Not yet.
No.
No, I, I did get a quick look at it, did, uh, have some discussion with Terry about a couple things, the unanticipated revenue, talked through that, and besides that, it's just last year plus one percent. The timber tax is discouraging, I, I imagine we might be getting, and there's, we might be getting some large dump before the end of the year, but I don't know.
Well, we're getting, we, we should get our property tax revenue, uh, by the end of October.
Our numbers.
And, you know, and we've still got operating revenue now, so.
Sure.
But what I'm anticipating for from January to April, when we get the next bunch, is expenses of around a hundred and twenty-five thousand. I just want to be sure we got enough to operate on.
Yeah, and I think it's, it's prudent to leave that number low.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Rather than, I mean, so, we bought the truck with the.
Yeah, that came out of timber tax money last year.
Which was nice, because I don't think we were plan, we weren't planning on buying a truck, but.
No, we weren't.
To get, you know, seventy thousand dollars when we were expecting ten.
Yeah.
Was a nice bump there, and gave us the ability to buy that truck, so.
Yeah.
Now, we expect twenty-five, and we're getting zero.
Yeah.
That's, that's concerning, but, you know, it's not up to us what.
Well, I budgeted ten, and we could actually, if we ran short of money, uh, the water fund shows a profit of twenty-seven, nine, twenty. We could borrow, we could take another ten out of that, or more, to pay back what we have loaned the water company, so.
Our own water.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's all our own money, it's just taking it from one pocket, putting it in the other. But, uh, you know, when we did the water budget, I was pretty adamant about we needed to be, start paying that back, and to start putting money away for the next time we gotta do a water plant ten years from now. You know, 'cause that was.
Right, yeah, we do have to put, put some reserve money away.
You know, that was pretty spending, and, and that came out of general fund revenue this year.
And the, um, remind me again where we were at with the North Shore. Do we have a, just a regular, oh, there it is, launch. So do we have a North Shore launch, or is it all launched together?
No, the North Shore launch is.
Oh, there it is, I thought.
Yeah.
And remind me where we were before the.
Oh, for the pay machine?
Yeah.
Oh, six hundred dollars.
Six hundred dollars a year we were getting, we were up to forty-four hundred already this year. And I know, Commissioner Jackson says it too, a lot of people still don't pay to use the North Shore launch.
Yeah, that's why we need cameras.
A lot. I mean, I, I drive through there pretty regularly, and, you know, I still see the, um, the Discovery Pass hung.
Oh, I know, I.
The, um.
Travis.
Handicap card hung, the.
Travis works at, trying to catch them all.
He does, I know.
You know, he can't be there twenty-four seven.
I know. All right, so any other discussion about the twenty-twenty budget? Nothing from the public, we'll close the budget hearing. We do have the second budget hearing scheduled for Monday, the twenty-first.
Twenty-first.
Yep. So, you want to look at the budget and come back that date, we're happy to take public input on the budget.
And the only other change should be, we'll have that, the rest of that unanticipated revenue figured out and attributed where it belongs. You know, what we found in BIOS was, it was category for mortgage, category for general mortgage, category for monthly mortgage, category for North Shore mortgage, category for Allen mortgage, and they were all, they all had money in them.
Mm-hmm.
So it was like sorting all out what went where, and, and we're, we know we got some more of that, you know, but that was stuff, when they set up the chart of accounts, that they did, not us, they said, what do you need? We said, you know, Allen mortgage, North Shore mortgage, and why we got general mortgage, I have no idea, but.
All right, well, we'll close the hearing.
And we were still stumbling through BIOS at that point. And we were still stumbling through bias at that point. Yeah, we were their first port.
Right, sure.
Yeah. Yeah, there's some of that too.
And we asked for a discount because we were their first port and they said no.
We've been trying to get them other business.
Yeah. Didn't somebody else get them?
Uh, Brownsville was talking to them, I don't know if they got them or not.
All right, so we're gonna close the public hearing, reopen the regular meeting and let me get back to the agenda here real quick. Thank you. Item C under new business, approval of resolution four zero six, Kitsap Bank Line of Credit.
I can read the cover sheet of the resolution, otherwise.
Is that the whole thing?
Yeah.
Let's not read that.
Yes, twenty pages long.
So, resolution four zero six, resolution of the Port Commission of the Port of Allen, Mason County, Washington, providing for the issuance and sale of a bond to evidence a revolving line of credit in the principal amount of not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars. Providing the date, form, terms, and maturity of the bond, authorizing the designated port representative authority to manage the revolving line of credit and approving the sale of such bond.
Motion to approve, any discussion?
I move to approve resolution four oh six.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Since our agenda is so large today, I would, um, recommend that maybe we move a couple of things over to our next, the day we're having the public hearing, we can table some of these things until then. I would like to table. Discussion about employee insurance and approval of resolution four zero seven. I would like to table discussion about construction of a garage.
How long would that take, not long?
Yeah, that's, that's, you either want to do it or you don't, four thousand bucks.
I would like to table, because I want to do a little bit of, I mean, I, we don't have to, but I, I can do it a little further.
Okay.
And where would that be in the budget, what line item?
Uh, I didn't put it in there because I was waiting on you guys to decide if you wanted to do it or not.
Where, where do you think it would go?
Uh, probably, we could put it in the capital budget.
Our capital budget?
Yeah, our capital budget.
What, what would have to come out of the other line items to make up that four thousand?
Uh, probably come out of reserves.
And, okay.
You know, or cash carry over either one. Now, we're carrying over forty-two thousand dollars from this year, so that'd be.
Table that one.
That'd be where I'd take it from.
Um, I would like to discuss and take action on the parking mortgage hours.
Yeah, let's do it.
Yeah. Seven to seven in the wintertime and seven to nine in the summertime, basically it. You know, what we get is people coming here, more in their boat.
They wanna go get ice cream or get some dinner.
Yeah, exactly.
And that's what we're all about.
Exactly.
And that's what we want people to come here for.
Yes.
And if we're charging for that, maybe they won't come.
Exactly.
Yeah, I, I think it's a great idea and if they're spending the night, well then.
That's another story.
Well, on the North Shore, uh, when Alderbrook does their Fourth of July, people aren't getting back to that dock till twelve, one o'clock. I would like to see that exception made, uh, I know, Travis was out there till late anyways, he reminded everybody to pay, so. I'd like to see the exception because we did get a large crowd of people there that night, uh, this last year. So just on, we can make an exception. I think they do, usually do their show on the Third of July, so on the Third, Third of July, that, you know, we extended. Getting those boats back in, most of the small boats don't have good running lights, so their people are taking them slow, so.
On the Fourth of July, this park's open.
Yeah.
Yes.
So, yeah.
Maybe if you just say the Third and the Fourth of July, we extend it till, I, rough, it would be twelve o'clock.
Yeah, having an extension is, is good.
I don't, I don't think we need to put that into the motion, I think.
Yeah.
You know, that's just something we'll, we'll just do.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's great.
I move that we change the hours that Larry had suggested.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Those are Travis's suggestions.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks Travis, she left us.
Yeah.
We did already talk to Heather Reese with an S on the C and.
I would suggest, uh, table in the discussion about the contract with Pat McCullough.
Yes.
Till I can get the scope of.
Yeah, 'cause I'd like to look at it.
Yeah, I'd like to get that written out.
Okay.
Is there a reason why we can't approve Heather for that space?
Well, she had, I wish she had stayed because she had talked about, uh, wanting to use like the closet for storing her photography equipment, and I said, we can't do that because, you know, we have to have a locked room and a locked file cabinet, and that's where it is. You know, so, I told her no, and she wanted to bring a piano down here and do piano lessons in here. And I don't think that's a good idea.
That won't work here.
She would have to rent the room.
Yeah, and, you know, so, but except for those two things, I would say.
And she wanted to be included in our website, which we can't do as well.
No, I had talked to her about what she'd like to do is be like our official photographer. And then for any wedding work that she did here, we would get a cut off. But, you know.
Like an employer relationship.
Yeah, I say, I don't know what the legal is on that, but, but, I mean, she seems pretty responsible.
Sure.
You know, seems to be a, a really genuine person and much more genuine than anybody else I've talked to about this. I mean, I've had a string of nut jobs, you know, pardon me, but.
Well, I would say to approve her to rent the office.
Yeah.
Monthly.
Yeah.
Nothing's stopping us there, but all the special requests would have to be kind of a case by case.
Okay.
Right, no, she's, every senior in high school calls her first to get their pictures taken. She's constantly booked, uh, moving people around, so.
Where does she live?
Somewhere in Belton.
She's Belton?
Uh, she told me, uh, I believe she lives in Beardsco.
Okay.
So do we need to make a motion on that or just?
Direction, I think.
Yeah, just direction, it's fine.
Yeah, I would say, and then everything else would be case by case.
And the P E E B has to do with the employee insurance, can we move that?
Not for that.
Okay.
Pretty much down to the retreat agenda.
I would prefer to keep it all in one, approve the resolution the same day we talk about the employee's insurance. Put the cart before the horse.
Yeah, we're just talking about two weeks.
Yeah. So now we are to retreat agenda. So our retreat will be in Leavenworth, we will have our, it will be open to the public.
Yes.
And we will have the current. Current plan that we have.
Yeah, the, you know, we've got our comprehensive scheme, but.
Scheme of harbor improvements, the comprehensive scheme.
Yeah, we wanna talk about updating that.
And I, I, I do have a couple of things to add, but, um, I gotta think them through a little bit further to see if they're really something that's interesting enough to put on there. One is the, the public swimming pool, and we had our, our input sessions here, there was a lot of talk about a public swimming pool. And then we talked to Kim Sellers, who said there's a lot of money for pools, neighborhood pools, that, that can have a way to put, make it public, so it was just a thought.
Okay, well, that's when we can, you know, have that under the comprehensive scheme of date project discussion.
Yeah, and just talk about it, I'm, I'm not suggesting that we do it. It's just, it's interesting to find out that there's money for that.
Yeah.
And there are communities that struggle with keeping their, their pools going, always have. But there's a help there.
Indoor shooting range, indoor shooting range.
Yeah. Ted had put that on the agenda, indoor shooting range property purchase, what do you have in mind there?
Just seeing if it'd be feasible for us.
Okay, yeah.
With all the ranges of property shutting down and D N R not really willing to advertise that you're legally allowed to shoot on D N R land. Uh, and I understand why they don't do that, but, uh, you know, if, if it'd be something that we could create a few jobs and have something, uh, class shooting range, they seem to become indoor shooting range, they're very popular. Uh, you know, safety's always our primary concern and doing it the right way. But, uh, I would expect if we were to do a quality shooting range in this area, we'd draw a lot of people.
Oh, I believe so too, you know, I did some research on this, there's, I think it was ninety-one hundred or approximately ninety-one hundred concealed carry permits in Mason County, in a county with sixty thousand people. And that doesn't count the people that own guns that never bothered to get a permit or don't want to get it from them. And law enforcement has told us if we did something like this, that they would use it.
Yeah, they would, I mean, it's thirty-two years of law enforcement, I hated shooting in the snow and in the rain, but, uh, it was nice for once in a while, we'd go down to the Olympia Range and shoot, but that got shut down, so.
Yeah, there's a real nice one on, in Lakewood, just right off of I five, Bridgeport Way and I five. And I stopped in there and looked at it and it's nice, it's clean, you know, just, uh, it's all concrete. So, it just, it was pretty impressive, you know, maybe what we ought to do is take a tour of that.
Well, my friend said Olympia too.
And your frie, I was just gonna say that, you have a friend in Olympia.
Shooting club.
Yeah.
I wanna say he's a hundred dollars a month and he has a thousand people in his club. And it's in the downstairs of a old Washington State liquor store.
Yeah. You know, I, I don't know if I said this before, but before I left DuPont, we were able to arrange our officers to go to the one in Lakewood, uh, for about an hour every two weeks, and our firearms instructor would just give them a list of things they had to work on. But we'd supply the ammo, we'd pay for the time there, the officers all had to go through a course, uh, sponsored by the, uh, the range. And, uh, the officers loved it, gave them time to work on their skills and, uh, it was really good, instead of having firearms training once every four months or once every three months, they would order, you know.
That's a great, great item to add.
Yeah, I think it's got a lot of income potential for the port. Because, you know, I wouldn't want to get in the business of selling guns, but I think we could sell ammunition at a profit.
I'm surrounded by a bunch of reins, rein, you know, 'cause there's always shooting, I mean, as you know, I have a private one on my property, but, um.
You know.
No, you do know. It's really loud.
I find shell casings in the parking lot once in a while, I figure the birds must break over, 'cause I know, I know you're not shooting over there. Plugs the casing, so it's not the bullet, yeah, yeah.
But there's a lot, it's not just me either, there's a lot around me, so that means that there's a lot of people that want a place to, to practice and keep their skills up. Oh, sure.
It seems like, uh, your range is fairly busy.
Well, kind of, but he doesn't really, it's just him pretty much, but there's, there's three other places around my place that shoot regularly and big stuff.
Yeah.
And there was a guy that used to work for us at Wed Apple that he bought and sold guns, you know, at gun shows and stuff, and we would go out, he has a nephew that lived down on North Shore, uh, you know, kind of back in, off of the road, back in the woods, had ten acres there, and we'd go out there and shoot all the time, so.
All right.
All right, well, we're ready to move on to item ten, public comment. Yes, please. Bonnie, come on up.
Oh.
Well, you look like you're doing pretty good then.
Yeah, great.
Torn meniscus in two places. So it's really great to not have that anymore. Uh, just wanted to bring you up to date, sorry for the fuzz, I think it's the fall, all of us are doing that. On the Sergeant project, and Larry talked about us signing our lease, which was great. Now, we, we've been able to sign our state contract, I'm just filling in the spaces for that, and that'll be done hopefully within the week. And, uh, excuse me, I've put together a formal call for bids that is going out hopefully this week. I'm putting in the Shelton Journal, which is necessary, and then in the Daily Journal of Commerce, do I know you, Jim? Seems like you've been around a long time, I used to be a port director many, many years ago.
Is that right, here, probably?
Here.
Yeah, she was our port director.
Anyway, um, I'm gonna put it in the Daily Journal of Commerce, and I did talk to Ron, he is interested in applying, you know, putting in a bid for it too, which is great. Anyway, if anybody's interested, it's a really long, boring thing, but.
If you want an extra copy of it, I'd like to look.
No, go ahead and, go ahead and look at that because this is, it's had some minor changes, dates and stuff, but that's the crust. I'm hoping that we can get it, the work done by March, hopefully it would be sooner than that. And it'll depend on the bid, if it was Ron, he gets a successful bid, then it would be earlier than that. We're still gonna have Nickel Brothers Moving lift the building, they'll do the work and then set the building back down and anchor it. And, excuse me, because, because we've taken the tack that we did, we are going to move ahead and finish the entire building on land. Because there's no reason to move it and then wait for that, because we do have enough resources, pretty darn close to finish the whole project right now. That's still gonna involve contributions and labor and things like that, but we're getting really close to it. And I've hired another, a structural engineer to go ahead and finish the, the whole permit thing for the whole building. And then that should develop enough information that Pat McCullough can take that and figure out what has to happen for the pier. Excuse me. Dan Orchard is on our committee, he's been a great help, and, yeah, he does a lot of stuff. Um, we've got some other people that are ready and willing to help once the major stuff is done, this stabilization of the building. For those who don't know, we're gonna drop out the floor, rebuild everything and put the floor back in, because the, the floor is totally shot. And it has twelve by twelve beams and four by six planking for the floor, and then there's two inches of concrete over that one before it's finished. Some of the work is gonna have to be done by contract and we still have a, we'll still have a fair amount of money after this contract. We're gonna be contracting for the roof and we'll be contracting for, obviously, the concrete. So, it'll be a combination, but we're really seeing the end in sight and hopefully it will be done within a year, so.
Done off the pier? Or done restoration?
The restoration will be done, it'll be ready to move, and I did talk to Nickel Brothers Moving, and he assured me, and I was pretty sure. They moved that thing without even breaking in a window, the shape that it was in. And he said, go ahead and, he said, go ahead and finish the building, he said, you might have a crack in your plaster, but even that, he didn't expect. Yeah, they're really good at what they do. So, um, yeah, it is a prevailing wage job and we are, we are required by the grant. Since our project is over a hundred and sixteen thousand, that's the limit for non, non-ports. Ports have different rules than what we do. So we did have to go up for a formal bid, and I'm looking at getting the bids back by the twenty-eighth. We're gonna have a site visit here, if anybody's interested, and I'm sure you probably would be, Judy. Then we'll open the bids on the twenty-eighth and hopefully get somebody contracted.
When is the, when is the Oyster House meeting, is that tomorrow, what time?
Tomorrow night.
What time?
Six thirty. Six thirty.
Okay.
Yeah, it's over here at the Little Historic Church, if anybody's interested. And we do, we are working with somebody else that is potentially, potentially gonna have funding for the move, but we're not sure how that's gonna work yet, but we are to that point where, where, uh, I've had to lay out the whole entire grant funding and we are right there, we've done all the match for the grant, we've got it all laid out, we have enough cash match, and this includes what we've done for the last six years, plus what we've got, and then we've got thirty-some thousand in the bank. So, um, we're moving really. So, um, we're moving really good and I think we're going to move pretty quickly and hopefully the pier will be done next summer and Rex Wallingford and the crew are ready to take the lunch ramp out. Because that's a big part of our match, so.
That's great news.
I'm very excited about it, that we're actually just going to move and, uh, not phasing it at this point, since we separated everything and we did get that grant and we've got somebody else on board. I think we just move ahead and finish it. Because that makes the most sense and we're not going to move and demove and move and demove and, and, uh, there's a lot of stuff in the budget that would require, um, all of the contractors' markups and everything, and a lot of that we will avoid by doing it this way, so.
And what time's the meeting tomorrow night?
Six thirty, you're welcome to come.
Bulldog Booster Club meeting tomorrow?
Oh, no, well, good for you, good for you, but, yeah, we're pretty excited and, and it's looking really solid and, uh, it's moving on, so, doing good.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Any other public comment? Any good to the order?
I have one thing. Since I've lived up here in Mason County, we have not had a Hunter Ed, this is off topic, but Hunter Ed class offered to any of our kids in North Mason. Uh, they either had to go up to Pauls Bow or Gate Harbor. I was reminded by this by the head Hunter Ed education instructor saying that since I'm semi-retired, I should be a Hunter Ed instructor, so I submitted the fifteen pages of background information and I would ask, I'll go through Leanne and Larry, that we hold it here. I think it'd be great, we could just do one a year, uh, for the kids. All, there's no weapons, uh, except dummy firearms that are inoperable. All the, uh, range stuff that kids would do, we'd probably ask Bremerton, uh, skeet and see if we can use their range for the, uh, kids to, uh, demonstrate their proficiency with the firearms, so. But, uh, and I also was reminded by my daughters that, uh, we need to have a Hunter Ed class here. So, uh, even if kids don't hunt, going through that class is, is fun for them. I've, I've taught kids from, I taught, I'll never forget, a little girl six years old, came into a class in Puyallup. And I was very concerned because I didn't think she was able to keep up with the reading material. And she outclassed everybody in the classroom, so she was absolutely amazing. But, uh, yeah, so that won't probably take place until probably either the end of this year or the beginning of next year, so.
So you have to get certified and.
I'll have to get re-certifying, yeah.
Well, congratulations.
Oh, thank you, it should be fun, so.
Um, I got a couple things.
Sure.
Port of Bremerton's having its annual community meeting, uh, November nineteenth at the Kitsap Conference Center. Has a full breakfast program, uh, the speaker is Peter Steinbruck, who's, uh, Port of Seattle Commissioner. And it's how are the efforts of the port affecting your future is the theme of it. Uh, the agenda, Seattle growth and its effects on Puget Sound by the Port of Seattle Commissioner Peter Steinbruck. Uh, ports economic impact on your community, what's happening at the port, and a ceremony honoring outgoing Commissioner Larry Stokes. So I don't know if any of you want to go to that, I got a little thing here for it.
Definitely like to go.
How much does it cost?
Forty dollars per. Yeah, I'd like to go as well.
Something else?
Yeah, um, I wanted to get your feedback on the letter to Endurus and, uh, Insurance Commissioner.
I would like to take the high road, count our blessings that we got a settlement.
Okay.
I'm with Scott, but I, I can't thank you enough, and I think we keep on pursuing, looking at another carrier. But, and if we get somebody comparable or somebody that said they could do it, I say we move on from Endurus. And taking, you know, our port away from their portfolio, I think would have a bigger impact, so. I don't like the way they drug us around the mud for that period of time, it hurt us more than it did, so.
We need to scramble.
Yeah.
I mean, this is something that should have been settled in a week, you know, not nine months.
Right. And I know we're not alone, I mean, I hear, I hear stories of, uh, double-digit price increases, denying claims. It might be something that our WPPA can help us with as well, because, yeah, I don't think we're the only port because you'd reached out to a few and they were all talking about their double-digit price increases, rate increase.
And at the executive director seminar, I spoke about what our experience was. And afterwards, I had a half a dozen people come talk to me, so.
And, you know, in the big scheme of things, they made a payout, but they'll make it back in the price increase.
Yeah, exactly.
And the attorney fees that we had to go through.
Yeah, so that's the part that's really stuck in my craw.
Come on up?
I'm, no, just.
Oh, you're, yeah.
Just everybody, um, I don't know if they need to go up to Oktoberfest, that, uh, the county, the situation, but, uh, as we can. It turned out really good, even though it rained all morning.
I drove through and I looked pretty busy. Oh, the Veltrum people must have been here.
Yeah, they ran out by six o'clock, actually, they had three breweries lined up, and one of them, the guy who owned it, his wife had been gone to go and deliver them, so, I mean, she's, um, so they didn't, so they were a little short on beer, but they ran out by six o'clock and that was just on. They had great time and lots of good coffee. But it never did really pour down, so it was, it was windy, but it was good, so I just wanted to let you know, it went really well out here.
I had one other thing. My wife is on the board of the Kitsap Community Foundation. And they are looking for charitable causes to donate to. And she advocated for North Mason Community Resources last year, and they got five thousand dollars. But it's time for them again, so if you know of anybody that might be.
North Bay Historical Society, charitable?
Well, I, you know, I'll put that in there, I mean, I don't care, you know. She's got to advocate for it and there's no guarantee that they're going to get anything, but, you know, I didn't know that North Mason Community Resources would get anything last year, so.
It's a great project.
Yeah, I'm not arguing.
Sure.
All right, if there's nothing else, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We are adjourned, thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, James, for coming, we're up here.
Thank you.